Okay, in your senior packet from our last meeting, we have minutes from our public hearing on some zoning requests that we had. For those of y'all that have reviewed this or was attendance of that meeting, or may have watched the video, does anyone see any errors or corrections that we need to make before we sign these into the record? Hearing none, I'll sign these minutes into the record. Our minutes from our actual regular scheduled meeting as well. Likewise, does anyone see any corrections or anything at least before we sign these into the record? Hearing none, I'll sign these into the record for record keeping of our minutes. Okay, our first item under new business. Anyone need a packet? We've got a couple, three here. Okay, the first item on our new business is consideration of the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Coordination Council Supplemental Subgrant Award Accountability Court. Back earlier this year, our judicial circuit received a grant from the state for the creation of a drug court in the Circuit Court District which includes Walker, Catoosa, Dade and Jutugah County. Judge Don Thompson is the presiding judge over that, whose office is here located in Walker County at the courthouse. So we, the custodians and I guess fiscal agent to say for that grant, there was no matching funds for that grant that the county had to put up. Likewise, this additional supplemental grant is for ankle monitors in the amount of $8,000. Shows at the bottom that the waiver request of $888.89 of waivers, so there's not any county cost to this. So this is basically to be in proper order and follow the state guidelines. I'm going to sign this grant award so we can turn this back in to the Criminal Justice Coordinator Council to allow them to add this to the budget so they can have the funding for the ankle monitors. Any questions on this? Hearing none, we'll sign this into our record of being approved of accepting this $8,000 grant. Defense Service Agreement. We're going to table that item for this meeting. That agreement and budget had not gotten finalized before this meeting, so that item will be tabled to our next meeting. We just have to have that in place before January 1st. So we do have at least, excuse me, one more meeting this month on the 28th, and we may have a need to call a special call meeting, and if we do, we may be able to get that in on that meeting as well. But at this time, that will be tabled until we can work through a couple of items of detail there. The third item is assigning of the ACCG Inter-Local Risk Management Firefighter Cancer Coverage Application Agreement. I'll briefly speak about this, and I'm going to ask our Chief Hodges to add some additional comments to this because he's worked on this quite a bit and has a lot of knowledge about this. But this policy for our full-time employees that are firefighters, it's roughly $223.24 per year, and we also cover our volunteers, and that's an average cost of about $197.56. So this is an annual projected cost, and this can vary from quarter to quarter based off of our census data of the number of firefighters and volunteers that we have. And Chief Hodges has been working to try to increase the number of volunteers, and so this may increase a little bit over time as our census data changes, but roughly, we're at $15,244 at this time. And this is in our budget that we passed back earlier this year, and I'll let Chief Hodges speak a little more in detail of what this coverage is for and how this came into conception with the study.
So it came under House Bill 146 through the legislation, and basically the firefighters, Georgia Firefighter Standards and Training, Fire Academy, and local officials legislated throughout the state, attempted to, wanted to provide cancer coverage for the firefighters. It didn't go through the first time, it was vetoed by the governor, there were some things they wanted to change it up. They changed it basically to remain compliant with the state of Georgia as a recognized fire department, and again, being compliant for ISO, for grants, you have to remain compliant. So by law now, we have, January 1st of '18, we have to start covering each firefighter. It's a $50,000 maximum coverage on the cancer and the long-term disability that's associated with it. We have, to give you an example of what the commissioner was talking about, it fluctuates, we have members join, leave. We also, what they also do is they, if you have a member, we have volunteers that volunteer at West Brow and Dade County, yet they volunteer also in Walker County. That cost is split, so there's a way that the formula works out that we will cover, as Walker County would only cover half the cost. So that's, that's what we're looking at. It's, it's a good policy, it's good coverage for them. It's giving them something back as long as they're within, you know, operating within the county as a member. So anybody got any questions or anything with that? That's kind of the highlights of it.
As he said, this is something new that the state legislation and the governor signed in 2017 to take effect in 2018. So this is a new coverage that all fire departments in the state of Georgia are having to comply with since our first responders have a higher likelihood of certain types of cancer due to the firefighting and the smoke intake and all. So this is something to give them a additional benefit for what they do to serve our community. So the ACCG stands for the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, and so we actually got a couple of different quotes, this being something new, and it was a custom designed product by the state. There was only two or three providers that were even set up to offer the coverage and the format that the state was looking for, and so our association by far gave us the best price point for coverage, and so we elected to stay with the association on this and provide this coverage. So we're consistent and know that we're in compliance through our association. The next item, four, Department of Transportation State of Georgia Application and Permit for Special Approachment. What this is, there's a project that's been underway for many years up in the Chickamauga area where the city and the county, along with some federal and state funding, has been working to try to create a multi-use pathway or trail system that would connect where you could come out of the Chickamauga Battlefield there on Wilder Road area, come in under the overpass of the bypass on a hard surface trail and be able to get all the way down to the center of Chickamauga or vice versa. So if you were in the city of Chickamauga, bicycle, walking, whatever, and you wanted to explore and have a hard surface designated path to get all the way to the Chickamauga Battlefield, that's what this is. A portion of this through the city has been done. They stopped about halfway up Hamill Drive up in Simonton Hills with the sidewalk. So the design that's being worked on would be to carry that on out, Hamill Drive to Five Points Road, cross over onto Osburn School Road, take that up almost to the intersection, but if you make a right-hand turn where they can go up in under the overpass so you don't have to cross over the five-lane divided, the four-lane divided highway there. So this is just an additional permitting process that we have to go through. There's not any funding that has to go with this, but I've got four color copies here of this document to, to sign here. We've got to have two witnesses on this, so that's what this is for, just to give public notice that we are working on this and hope to be able, in time to come, to finish utilizing those grant dollars. There's quite a few grant dollars sitting on the sideline that we want to utilize so we don't lose them, and so this keeps this in place so we don't lose that funding to finish that project out. But at this time, we're not spending any, any money on this at this moment. This is some information that come to us through our engineering firm that we work Next item on our agenda is to sign an engagement letter for auditing services provided by Henderson, Hutchison and McClure, as they go by, H-H-M. This is a pretty standard procedure. Each year, the sole commissioner or board commissioners can engage with an auditing firm to do an audit that is required by state law. Our physical year-end of business for the county is September the 30th of each year. Historically, in the past, the county has used another auditing firm for the last 16 years, but following guidelines and training that I went through last year through the Carl Vincent Institution of Government at the University of Georgia, they advise and recommend that all county and local governments change auditing firms every five to six years or so, just as a good standard practice to have a fresh set of eyes come in and review the documents and the bookkeeping and recordkeeping, just as standard practice. So we're going to follow those recommendations, and we selected an auditing firm out of Chattanooga that does other governmental audits, it's a kind of a specialty, and so not all accounting firms do audits, and so this is one that has come highly recommended to us, is used by some other local governments, and they have an outstanding track record. So this is the engagement letter that we need to sign in public so they can get started, and hopefully end up sometime maybe around April timeline, they'll have this audit done, and we'll release that on our website publicly. Okay, item six on our agenda was about our employee health clinic. This item as well will be tabled tonight, but I will give you a little bit of information on this. The county, for several years, has provided a onsite health clinic for their employees. There has been a contract in place with a local provider. We have given them notice that we will, we're suspending that contract as of the end of the year, so their service will run through Friday, December the 29th of 2017. We will continue with a clinic for our employees and their covered dependents. So anyone that is on the county medical insurance program as an employee, and if they have their covered dependents on there, we will still be able to provide them with clinical services, and so we just got a few more things to do to finalize the agreement that came back, and so once we get the agreement finalized, we'll have another meeting publicly and announce, excuse me, those changes, but we did want to rest assure all of our employees that we will be ongoing, still providing a clinic for them, and we will have a, a new focus on wellness care, preventative care, and also, we have a lot of our staff members that are dependent on nicotine, tobacco products, and we're going to try to help our people kick that habit and put some programs together to help them become healthier by being able to get off the nicotine addiction that's, that's hard on folks, so it's hard on their health. So we want to try to make our people healthier and happier and better employees, so we're going to table releasing that agreement until we have everything finalized with it. Okay, that officially adjourns our regular scheduled meeting. At this time, we'll end that part of our meeting, and we will open the floor to any general discussion, question or comment.
Who are you guys going to have a clinic with?
That's not ready to be announced. Once we get everything done, you'll be the first to get a press release and to all of the media outlets, so once we get that finalized, we'll get that to you, Tyler.
What's the cost that you guys are currently paying per year for your current clinic?
We'll release that at that time as well of what the current cost has been. We will be seeing some savings with the new clinic model that we're going to, and we'll provide that information at that time, in the release.
And who is it currently with? What's the name of the group that works here?
Southern, Southern.
Southern Clinic Solutions.
Yes, Southern Clinic Solutions, yes.
Okay. What's going to be different about the clinic model?
We're going to have more of an emphasis on preventive care, wellness care, more education. We will have a health coach that will work with our covered employees and their dependents. So just trying to put more of an emphasis on not utilizing clinical services just when you're sick, but using the clinical services from the preventive side, and so we'll have a big campaign for our employees to, to be able to become healthier by assistance from a, from a health and wellness coach.
Do you have an estimate of how much the new clinic will cost?
I do. That'd be in the press release.
How many employees do you guys cover already planning?
I don't want to be misquoted, but we'll provide you that information, because not all of our employees take the health coverage, some have coverage elsewhere, but we'll provide you that information at that time. Okay, other questions?
Water Board.
Water Authority.
Yes, now you had that meeting yesterday with Moccasen Bend and everything?
Yes.
We'll be standing.
Okay. What he's referring to, he attended the Water and Sewer Authority Board meeting that we had earlier this week, and we had quite a bit of discussion about our ongoing problem with our infrastructure, with our sewer system. Our sewer system has been neglected for many years, and the routine maintenance and care of that system has not been done over a long period of time. Through the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, part of the waste goes north to Chattanooga to the Moccasen Bend Treatment Plant, and a portion of the waste goes to our treatment facility that we own and operate in the Chickamauga area. They're off of Highway 27, real close to where Shaw Industries SI Plant is. Most of our problem is on the northern end of the county that runs into the Moccasen Bend Treatment Plant. We have a large problem with infiltration of what they refer to as INI into our system, primarily when we have heavy rains. So that tells you that there is a lot of manhole covers that are not properly sealed like they need to be, there's other entry points in the ground, maybe where the ground settles, or, or joints have not been secure like they need to be. Our system up there, prior to this year, the agreement was that they charged us based off of billable gallons, and so we provided them a report every month of how many gallons of water that we sold, and they billed us a rate based off of that for the sewer treatment. So you would think, okay, if you sold 1,000 gallons of water, you ought to have 1,000 gallons of sewer waste. Well, the acceptable limit is if you have 1,000 gallons of water, the acceptable limit of sewer is three to one, so you'd have as much as 3,000 gallons of sewer, because they know you're going to get a certain amount of INI into your system just due to rains and manhole covers and things of that nature. What we discovered earlier this year, when we got our first bill from them, is that our infiltration for one month was over 106 million gallons in one month. And so we ended up with a little over a $200,000 increase in charges in one month, which was substantial. And so our water company financially cannot sustain those type of increases without the associated revenue, and a lot of that increase is due to, again, the neglect into the sewer system where it's not being managed properly. So the board has already agreed and has already spent over $273,000 in additional repairs of actually slip lining some of the existing sewer system, primarily over in the Flintstone area around Rock Creek. And so we have the equipment and the ability to go down to the system and run cameras through it and actually see where there's cracks or penetration points into the system. We found a area over there around Rock Creek where some of the old piping had come apart over time, and it was allowing water to come in. You don't get water going out, you build, the pressure comes in, and so we had one place where we were getting in an estimated of over 800 gallons a minute. And so there is a technology out there to keep you from having to go in and completely dig all of this ground up, and some of this sewer line is 20, 25 foot down under the ground due to elevations, because it's, most of it's a gravity system. So to get the proper elevations of fall, they have to get into sometimes those depths, and so with that, you don't want to have to dig that up, because to dig all that up, you're looking at an average cost of about $100 per foot to go and take up existing sewer line and replace it. We can have a company come in, and they go internally and put in a process, through a heat process, and they basically re-line the center of that pipe, and they can do that for around $25 a foot. So it's substantial savings to do that. And so by doing that, the last reports, we've cut our infiltration by about a little over 50 percent. The last report showed we, our infiltration was about 49 million gallons a month. So to give you that background, to say we went to, to meet with Moccasen Bend's folks this week, and we had some questions and concerns with our contract agreement and the price structure and different things, and so the county attorney is working with their attorneys to get some clarification and also see if they can work with us on helping us achieve some of these hurdles. So it's a, it's a serious problem, it's a real problem. The Water Authority, it's been well documented, was made aware of this five years ago, there, when the city of Chattanooga and Moccasen Bend came under consent orders from the EPA, there was regional meetings and documentation put out to all of the surrounding companies, sewer companies that feed into Moccasen Bend's regional system. And there are some others, I understand, that sit back and didn't start working on their infiltration, and Walker County being one of those. So we are probably going to have to be spending at least another quarter of a million dollars in the near future to continue to make improvements to that system. So it's, it's been a bear because we cannot sustain those increased costs now that we're being billed off of total flow. And we first thought maybe their meters were wrong, so one of the first things we did, we put meters in, in front of their meters, and found out their meters are accurate, it is happening. And so we did that back several months ago. So we're working through that, that problem. The Water and Sewer Authority Board consists of five members. Our enabling act from the state says that the sole commissioner of the county is the chairperson of that board automatically, and then there's four additional voting members of that board, and that board meets over in Flintstone at the Water and Sewer Authority the second Tuesday typically of every month at 6:00. So if you ever want to attend those meetings, I know several of you in this room do from time to time, but those are also public meetings. They start at 6:00, the second Tuesday of each month. I know that was a long answer, but I wanted to give everybody a little more overview so they didn't be confused.
They're willing to work with?
We hope so, we hope so.
You said the attorneys are working to get clarification?
Yeah, there was some, there was a contract that was signed back in December of 2016, and it was an amendment to the first contract, so we were trying to get some clarifications on some of the terminology and verbiage in that agreement.
What's the gist of stuff that you guys are trying to figure out?
I would just have to get you a copy of it.
Is it like legally stuff, or is it?
Yeah, it's a lot of legally stuff.
What were the hurdles that you guys are saying, stuff? You mentioned that there's hurdles you guys were trying to overcome.
Well, our biggest hurdles is figuring out how we're going to financially abstain, to be sustainable with this system, to be able to fix these problems, because the prior board, the prior board had a five-year notice, and they didn't take any action, zero. And so now that the new charges have started based off of total flow, now we're playing catch-up, trying to fix these problems that should have been budgeted and planned for over a five-year system, and that was the intentions that the federal EPA put in place. They knew that all of these systems just couldn't overnight do all this, and so part of that consent order was to create a plan to give everybody five years to implement that into their budgets, into their rate structures, and get these infiltration problems fixed to reduce the amount of infiltration going into the system.
You said the number that we've gotten out from about 100 million to 48 million?
Forty-nine million.
And that's not just infiltration, that's everything, right?
No, that's infiltration.
Oh, okay.
That's how much spring water, storm water, and so forth, that we're getting in over and above what the sales are.
And is that over, over and above the three to one limit, or is that?
Over the actual billable sales.
Okay. So what's the, how much above the limit is that, do you know?
It's one of those big percentages you like to post, and I'd have to do the math. I don't know, it's a lot. It's a big, it's, I mean, it's a huge percentage. I mean, it's many, many times over what our sales number is. We have approximately 3,000 sewer customers on the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, and there's 11,000 roughly water customers, and so you just took the amount of infiltration of 49 million gallons and divided that over 3,000 customers, I mean, you can tell that it's, it's a huge number, and so we've got to go and camera the system and do the maintenance and find all of these break points. There's some that, you know, it makes sense if they're more shallow or depending on the severity of the break or the condition, we actually do go in and dig it up, especially if it's a short area, but we have already re-slip lined several hundred linear feet of popping already.
Going back to the clinic real quick, I forgot to ask this, what were the key reasons why you wanted to change the agreement or change services?
We wanted a, a higher level of care. We wanted a, a better clinic experience. With the clinic being here onsite, it's very difficult, it was kind of a makeshift setup with the exam rooms and the spacing, and it just doesn't meet today's standards to do that. Also, I wanted to get out of what I felt was potential liability risk, as I like to say, I wanted out of the drug business, because our clinic that's onsite actually dispenses prescription drugs that we're responsible for, and I don't want that liability risk, and so we want to, to change that. Also, we were wanting to... Also, we were wanting to, um, extend the hours of service, so there's more available times of service. And then, probably most importantly out of all of that is the, the wellness piece, is to try to be proactive on the health and wellness on the, on the front end.
When you say that higher level of care, what do you mean?
Well, just like here, we don't have a, uh, an onsite lab, so if they do, uh, a blood draw, they have to send that out. There's a time delay. Uh, if you need an X-ray, they have to send you to another facility. So, to, just, as one example, so to provide a higher level of care, if you can walk into the facility that has an onsite lab, so when they do a blood draw, they can walk down the hall, and in a lot of those types of, uh, tests that they run in today's time, within a few minutes, they can come back with results. And so, that you can get treatments and answers and, and recovery much faster than having to send something off by mail or by courier to an offsite lab, and twenty-four, forty-eight hours, you get a result back. Uh, same thing with, uh, with an X-ray. They was having to send those out. So, you know, just, just things like that, to be able to have a more responsive, higher level of care, extended hours, uh, so forth. So, the provider that we had for what they had to work with in this facility, provided a good service. We're not upset at them at all. They, uh, they, they did well with what they had to work with that was provided here for them. Uh, but we've been able to study this over several months, and to take that to a higher level of care to increase our benefit offering to our employees, uh, we're gonna make that change. So, no dirt there.
This looks longer term.
Yes.
Since it is so much less expensive, what is the quality and the long-term last of that?
Good question. Fifty years.
Is that, would that be the same amount as digging up and replacing the pipe?
Probably not. Uh, plus, you know, digging up's so labor-intensive, and a lot of times these sewer lines go through people's properties where there's easements. So, you go in there and you dig up yards, and then a lot of times, uh, you see a lot of sewer lines that are put down the center of the road. So, not only do you have about a hundred dollars a foot for that part, then you've gotta come back and repave the road. And so, it's, it's more costly, it takes longer, and they can go in and do a lot of slip lining very, very fast and, and not disturb things on the surface, other than just having some heavy trucks maybe blocking the road a little bit.
But al- also, with the slip lining, it can be done a second time, too.
That was my next question.
It can be done more than once.
And with the slip lining, we've got the equipment and technology that, once they do a section, uh, we can go back and re-camera that and, and do an inspection of the quality of the work. So, uh, to make sure it is a, more of a sealed system. So, it's just, um, cost-effective in time and, and everything is just the, the modern way to do that. Uh, some of this, um, pipe that we're even able to slip lining is not even plastic pipe. It's the old, um...
I forget what it's called. It's, it's basically cardboard and wax.
Well, not even that, but it's more of a, um, more of a clay, yes. What's that called?
Terracotta.
Terracotta. That's what we're looking for. So, a lot of times that terracotta pipe, over time, it just, it starts cracking and breaking apart and allows storm water to get into that. So, a lot of that that was slip lined over in, in Flintstone was terracotta pipe. And so, we're coming in with a new sealed coating. And then, two, when you're doing plastic pipe, you've got a joint every, what, ten, twelve, fifteen feet? You've gotta joint that pipe. So, when you slip line it, it's a continual no seam. So, from, from where you start to where you end, that's your seam. And it's a continual slip through there. So, it's just, the technology's just incredible. And, uh, other, uh, companies that we've talked with, I mean, everybody says that's, that's the way to go. What else?
Shannon?
Yes, sir.
Uh, has there been any updates or conversations with primary healthcare? Have they had their board meeting? Have they talked to you at all concerning the lease agreements they have with the county?
Yes, uh, as far as primary healthcare, it's the leased facility in Rawlsville, uh, where they have been, again, that facility, end of August was for ten years at a dollar a year, and the county was paying all the utilities and insurance, which was costing the county about thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh, did receive communication, uh, from them, from their attorney to our attorney, uh, where they counted offered for twenty-five-hundred dollars a month. Uh, based off of the market study done by the appraisal, was eighty-eight-hundred dollars and seventy-five cents per month, which is based off of dollar and seven cent per square foot per month, which we have proven many times over is the market rate for medical space. And so, their offer of twenty-five-hundred dollars per month was rejected, because that works out to just shy of thirty-one cents a square foot. And there's nothing around here that you're gonna rent retail or medical space that's thirty cents a square foot. I don't even think you can rent warehouse space for thirty cents a square foot. And so, we've rejected, uh, that, and, uh, so we're trying to work that out.
Have you given them some sort of deadline on this? I mean, obviously, you guys are essentially the landlord.
January the second, cause currently, they're operating without a lease. Uh, their lease expired August thirty-first of twenty-seventeen. Due to the delay in getting them a lease to look at, I told them we wouldn't charge them anything for September. Uh, and so, they're gonna owe rent for October, November, December. So, we've gotta get something worked out the first of January, or they're gonna, they're gonna have to move out.
Have you heard anything about the central office hearing that they were using?
Uh, the lease on that matures January thirty-first of twenty-eighteen. So, I've also sent them notice on that and provided them with a copy of the appraisal, which shows the rental value and the, uh, the cost if they wanna purchase that building either way. So, I've not heard back from them on their decision on that. Who's next?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're six miles away from the tax day.
Yes, sir.
I have a tax question. I'll go up.
Sure.
Uh, is the common for a fee to be higher than the county public taxes itself?
Very possible, uh, just not knowing your individual situation, but if someone has, uh, conservations or something?
Notice my fee is seventy, seventy-five percent higher than the public tax itself. Does that sound fair to you? In it being a fee?
Okay, so, this here is your county M and O, and then you've got your, uh, public health facility fee, which is...
I'm talking about the fire fee, which is now the public safety fee. It went at five-hundred-and-fifty-eight percent?
Okay, the public...
Does it sound fair to you?
Well, the public safety fee before, uh, is this a commercial or a...
Yeah, it's a commercial.
It is a commercial building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The public safety fee before on commercial, do you remember? I don't have the commercial in my head memorized.
It was four-hundred, four-hundred-and-eighty dollars.
Okay, and so, what we did on both commercial and residential, we had a lot of inquiries through the election that it wasn't equitable and fair, because someone in a nine-hundred-square-foot home was paying the same version as a four or five thousand square foot.
Chief Hodges' example, where he compared a nine-hundred-square-foot mobile home to a four-hundred, I mean, four-thousand-square-foot house.
Right, right.
Was you aware that nine-hundred-foot, square-foot mobile home is exempt? And that actually don't pay anything. Kinda ironic that you...
No, they're not exempt. They just pay the, the minimum base.
No, sir. You need to look that up. If it's sitting on a, uh, foundation, they have to. But if it's just sitting on the wheels and has the independent unit, it's exempt. I looked up over a hundred of them. You didn't charge them.
I don't, that's, that would be a mistake.
Have you had, you said you looked them up. Do you have them? Cause I'd love to have them.
We'd love to get you to provide that to us.
Uh, you have the computer?
I've got one of them.
Look it up. Just hit them up and start looking at them.
Okay, so you don't have any examples you can provide us?
No. I do have a...
It's hard for us to fix it if you don't help us.
So, uh, the reason I'm paying two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty dollars on, on my buildings, I have four buildings, sixty-four hundred square foot each. You give an example. So, based on your mathematics, addition calculations, and this is your figures, Chief Hodges here, the one who came up with this system.
That's right.
And his analogy. So, based on, uh, his mathematics, if I have a fire on one of my buildings, he'll need to send out, this is the reason I'm paying two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty dollars. He'll need to send out one-hundred-and-ninety-two firefighters, seventy-three fire trucks, twenty command vehicles, that's a total of ninety-three vehicles. Might be able to get five, six of them on the lot, and it will take y'all fifty-one hours to put that fire out. So, that's why I'm having...
How did you come up with that math?
Going by your figures.
My figure was an example of actual calls we made, not, not exactly what it takes or what we have to put in.
But you said that's the reason, it's based on square footage now.
I said it's based on needed fire flow, it's based on square footage.
Mm-hmm. So, that's what it would take?
No, sir. You're, that's not what it would take.
But that's what you said. That's, that's your mathematics.
I gave you the example of actual calls that happened in Walker County, which is what we put on the scene for these type of calls.
That was your example as to why it's based on square footage now, the cost.
The, the, the example was that it takes more resources. So, that's pretty, that's pretty logical.
So, right. So, the price is based on what it would take to put out the fire, needed fire flow.
Right. Not, not multiply, not multiply by...
I'm being charged by my needed fire flow and my square footage.
Needed fire flow is based off square footage.
Yeah. So, it's gonna take, once again, one-hundred-and-ninety-two firefighters, seventy-three fire trucks, twenty command vehicles, and it's gonna take fifty-one hours to put that fire out. That's why I'm having to pay two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
Well, if you're, let's just say your math's right.
I made this right, sir.
But that's probably not enough then, if it's gonna take that type of resource.
Yeah, we need to, we need to increase the budget by four-hundred-million dollars.
We need, we may need to relook at this next year.
Not be doing a priest it, but you need to be fair about it.
It's gonna take fifty-one hours. This is probably not enough.
You said the way it was done is because BB pulled a figure out of the sky.
That's right.
Can I come by your office tomorrow and pick up a copy of the study y'all did to come up with this system?
You said you was at the meeting, and we went over a lot of examples and looked at needed fire flow and tried to come up with an equitable way of doing this. Should you pay the same price as, uh, Audi is sitting up here with probably ten times the square footage?
Are they paying for every square foot, or are they getting a discount?
No.
How many square foot do they have?
They paid, there's a, there's a maximum on it.
There's a maximum that you couldn't recall thanks to him, since you're the mastermind of the system. He stepped in and helped you remember what it was.
What was it was?
A gentleman stood up and asked you, uh, about the Marshall property, and you said there's a limit, but you couldn't recall what it was.
Well, I probably went to look to make sure I was...
So, you went, you went to look at your notes, and he stepped in, told you what it was.
We would rather hesitate and make sure we look at our notes and get the right answer than just pull something else out of the air. So, I don't, I think that's a little over...
Did you do a study to come up with the...
I think it's a little over criticizing someone to pause to look for a number to verify that they're right.
But...
But it's, it's the system.
But we're talking about a lot of money. He should know it inside out.
You know, but we are trying to make this equitable and fair based off of needed fire flow.
So, you feel that's fair?
We do.
That I'm paying seventy-five percent more. You do?
Because it's been undervalued for so long.
And what kind of study did you do to come up with that price?
We did, uh, analysis of needed fire flow, just like what he's talking about. And then, we tried to back into the numbers.
Is there any other counties in the state of Georgia that's doing it this exact same way? Could you give me a list of those counties?
Uh, if you give me a list of those truckers, we will. How's that for a deal?
How many of them need?
As many as you can find, cause we wanna go back and make that right and correct it. Cause there could be an error in the, in the system the way that was done. So, you provide us the information, we'll provide you information. How's that?
So, can you write down when, today you make your meeting, while I'm with you?
Uh, it's December twenty-eighth. We can probably get it to before then, if you can provide us the information.
I'd rather do it here.
Sure, December twenty-eighth.
Okay.
I can write it down if you need to, if you want, yeah.
Same time?
Y- yes, sir.
Do you have one-hundred-and-ninety-two firefighters?
Do I have what?
Do you have one-hundred-and-ninety-two firefighters?
I'd love for you to fill out applications all the year.
You got the mutual aid system.
I don't think my health will allow me to do that.
You know anybody? Be glad to have all the years of luck.
Um, that's why we have a mutual aid system, is, uh, because there are fires, just like when the bar with...
You do agree this price is based on square footage?
But there is a maximum that there was...
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get a discount on mine.
You'll add on to your building, you will. If you have a bigger building, you'll max out.
That makes a lot of sense.
All right, thank you. Who's next?
I could pick up this study.
Uh, we'll provide you the information when you get up yours.
Oh, so it's a deal?
Yeah, we, I thought we made a deal.
So, you do have the study?
I thought you wanted to know...
But if I provide information, you do have a co, you're not gonna know.
We've got information we can provide you, yes.
You didn't have to come to the study, did you?
We have information we can provide you.
Information. But there was actually no study done.
We'll, we'll get you some information.
There's, there's, once again, there are any counties in the state of Georgia using this exact same system.
We're gonna get you the information.
I already know the answer to that. I'm trying to get you to give me the answer.
We're gonna move forward.
Did you know that Walker County is the only county in the state of Georgia using this system?
We're gonna move forward. You've had your time. We'll follow up at your next meeting.
Okay.
Who's next? Anybody? All right, I guess that concludes this meeting. Thank y'all for coming tonight.